Public hearing, says the public three to be zone property located at sixteen eighty two thirty six South Florida Street. R one and we zoom to R three.
Anything?
Um, I'm sure if I have some people here, um, I'm, I'm definitely supporting the residents in this. Um, but, um, well, I'm sure we'll have people against it and for it.
David Scott.
R one and we zoom to R three.
Anything?
Um, I'm sure if I have some people here, um, I'm, I'm definitely supporting the residents in this. Um, but, um, well, I'm sure we'll have people against it and for it.
David Scott.
Public hearing, to consider the application of.
That's right, um, um, you mean, what, what is, what is this action?
So, the office, um, it was, it was raining like with a, a lot of office, lawyers have. And now they're looking to make it like daycare, a small, smaller daycare in the community. And so with, with that, um, it's more traffic will be coming into the community, we have more people. And so they're looking to, you know, to utilize that asset.
Old Charlotte Dalton?
Yes.
From the corner of Dalton?
Yeah, Dalton, Law Street.
Me on.
Yep.
It's about fifty yards south of Dolphin Street.
So it's south of Dolphin Street.
Mm-hmm, right before you get to the real, well, about halfway to the railroad tracks. Gosh.
Hi, if I could clarify, this is located on the west side of Dolphin, uh, Florida Street, just south of Dolphin. There are four existing duplex, multi-story structures, those are to remain. The property right now is split zoned, B one along the frontage, the rear portions of the yard is zoned to R one. They're asking for rezoning to R three, and they have subdivided to put at one structure on each lot. At the planning commission meeting back in June, there was one property owner from the area that had questions. Those were answered, and that was all we had on file.
So you just have one person come down as a proposition or?
Just had questions, which was ant, uh, a question, which was what are they going to do with the property? The property in terms of how it's developed will remain as is, they're just cleaning up the, the zoning and the lots.
So is it already a daycare there or?
No, sir, this is, this is multi-family, uh, if you're familiar with the area, it's just north of the rail, it's between the railroad track and Dolphin Street on the west side of Florida. We did have a recent rezoning for daycare, that one was withdrawn.
Yes, withdrawn?
Yes.
So this here just.
Oh, this, oh, okay. Got it wrong.
So this here just cleaning up, get up, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
So the daycare was withdrawn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, okay.
Another portion of council? Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Public hearing, to consider the application of Monty Bryant's board, based on the purpose and necessities to operate at L S D bottom line service. Um, this is put back in a day of the government.
Yeah, um, that's one. Uh, now they should, long thing to pile the, uh, coordinates, we just passed, it should be good. It's not really golf carts, but L S Ds that are allowed. That's from the council. That's where.
This is a petition to the other communications we have, the department, um, in style, L S L. Um, she wants to provide the base on the, what the, the, the council and the council for their support. Chris Hill, um, his final remarks regarding investigation request of classification, Charlie Martin, who disclaims how essential broken sidewalks are. Resolution sounds over zero eight five ninety eight, who first sort of made a safety supply for Tahoe and Durango, this taxation means.
And Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm still waiting on them reports, though it's requests, we continue to hold this over until we get that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring it to him after, uh, pre-council.
Okay.
Zero one six twenty four.
Hey, do you need to share with all the council members?
We'll look.
Thank you.
Zero one six twenty four, authorized area of vulgar for US Highway forty five, street safety. Zero eight six two five, provider base, pit doors, that road, gloves. Zero eight six twenty six, full first source fuel for lane pass seven. Zero eight six twenty seven, who first order to L C N, more cars for various vehicles for immediate cyber provision. Zero eight six twenty eight, who first source of Gulf Coast Fitness Service for exercise fitness equipment at the first precinct. Zero eight six twenty nine, who first order to Gulf Coast Fitness Service for exercise fitness equipment, least capital. Zero eight six thirty, who first want to see them, we got time for desktop computer, with, uh, with our rescue department. Zero eight six thirty one, who first order to sent it, corporation for long sleep, work shirts for public services department. Zero eight six thirty two, who first want to change from five six mode America for traction panels. Twenty one six thirty three, authorized contractor constable engineer for wolf bridge, both share sidewalks. Sixty six three six, authorized settlement agreement on release of clients. Orders being introduced, Mr. Presley on top.
Mr. President? Yeah, if we can go back to twenty one six thirty three. I've, I've got a problem in my district with sidewalks. And I've been trying to get four small pieces of sidewalks fixed since December. And we keep letting new contracts, and I understand it's two totally different contracts. But until we fix the things that are broken, let's stop doing new contracts for concrete work. I mean, it, these little things are biting us where we don't need to be pit. And we got to clean these things up before we start new, new things. So I just ask that we look at that, I'm not going to stop this, I'm not going to have my colleagues to vote against it. But, you know, we, we've seen a lot of new contract led, contract work led. And we got to fix these things that are hanging out there for six, eight, ten months. So I'd ask that we get that daycare thing.
This is the engineer to.
Yeah, I, I get it, but it's still sidewalks.
Orders being introduced, sixty four zero three, six zero, South Florida Street. Zero two zero thirty nine, orders to drive a three portion of seven, constable issue in the city.
Mr. President?
David Ronald.
This was a, um, it's, it's coming on late unfortunately, but, uh, it's an effort to try to find some common grounds and middle ground between the community maps and then the mayor's plan so that we can have consensus on a plan that we adopt. Um, and it, it's not tremendously different from the community map, it's not tremendously different from the mayor's map. It shifts a couple neighborhoods that affects districts one, five, six, and seven, with just moving a few neighborhoods around. So, um, I'm sure you all looked at the map and had opportunity to study it, um, but it's simply just a way to try to meet the middle on some of this. Hope y'all will vote for it.
Mr. President?
Uh.
None of my group, my colleague, you know, that throughout this process, my constituents been coming down. And, you know, I know it's really kind of like, you know, I had someone ask me a question, say, you know, why now? I said, well, we had opportunity to listen, that's what we've been doing, been listening to our constituents, especially my constituents and constituents. And I believe that this is a, a great map utilizing the community map as well as mayor map. Um, because he heard the concerns of our constituents, and so just like my colleague, hopefully, we'll get a vote on this map.
I'm first.
Has the resolution to be introduced? Zero three six twenty nine, one official, two is the Mobile City Council, City Council. Thirty seven six forty, recommend approval to the A B C board, issues of specialty, yes retail, with large solicitor lounge for Saturday's activity. Fifty eight six forty one, authorized rule for police group sixteen thirty. Sixty six forty two, twenty three, forty four, forty five. Our internal appropriations to be born, the other being suspicion association, Urban Public Aid Elementary School, Lewis Middle School, and feeding and milk service only person. Resolutions being introduced, zero eight six forty six, who first source of fuel for various city locations. Zero eight six forty seven, who purchase for to charge point for annual renewal of cloud equipment maintenance services for E D charging stations, cruise terminal. Seventeen thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars. Zero eight six forty eight, who purchase order to environmental systems research institute for annual license to build for G I S mapping software. One thousand six hundred and eighty four thousand ninety three cents. Zero eight six forty nine, who purchase order to quit buildings, or classroom office building for mobile fire rescue training center, three hundred twenty six thousand seven hundred and eighty seven dollars.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Scott.
Yeah, just curious, where, I know we were looking at a, a training center and a safety center. Can you sort of lay out where this falls in that overall plan, the overarching plan for this? What this gets us and, and what we still have outstanding after this and things?
Yeah, now, I'll, I'll speak real quick and let Lawrence also chime in, because obviously it's his land in terms of operational piece. But from a construction, design and construction standpoint, um, as you know, we had to stop work on that, uh, modification we're going to do out at the current fire training center. We're looking at finding an alternate location, um, and have hired, uh, a design firm to help us not only do that, but also design the facility. Um, because of those delays, we know that this is still going to be about two to three years to get to the point that that's complete. Obviously, fire, uh, needs a operational facility to continue to do their training and office location, which they don't have on site because it was removed and demoed. Um, this temporary facility, it's, it's a little bit more than temporary, it's a tra, it's an office trailer, so it can be moved and relocated at the end of its use. But we did an analysis on cost of renting it for two to three years versus buying it, and it was better, uh, for the city's interest to just buy it and own it. And then at the end, if we want to repurpose it somewhere after three years, when they have their new facility built, then we can do that as a city asset. So that's why we do this, this money's coming out of the money that was already set aside to do the construction of that facility when we were going to build it the first time.
Do we have the land that this is going to go on?
This is going to go on the current location, uh, the site where they have the fire training, but we're still identifying the actual site where we'll do the permanent fire training facility.
Okay.
Anything else? Yeah. Thanks, Jim.
Zero nine six fifty, and six fifty one, authorized on one time lump sum, payment to eligible retirees and beneficiaries of the city of Mobile, four hundred and seventy thousand. And to eligible members and eligible survivors and beneficiaries of the local Alhaim Police Department, one, four hundred and sixty five dollars.
Um, I'll, I'll go ahead, Mr. Dave.
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What's the difference between this, these proposals, and it seems like, I mean, I, my recollection is kind of spotty. But it seems like to me, on at least one other occasion, perhaps two other occasions since twenty thirteen, we've made, we ran a one-time bonuses to retirees. But my reflection is we did that through the budget process. So what's, what's the difference between this proposal and what we've done in the past?
I don't know what you've done in the past exactly, but really, this is an initiative by RSA. You know, I think last year, most pension funds were doing pretty well as the market was strong and cities and states were doing well. So, uh, the RSA felt that they were able to issue a one-time lump sum payment to eligible retirees. They had to take this initiative, run it by the legislature, and then the legislature approved it, and then they send it to all the cities to see if they want to go ahead and move forward with it as well and adopt it. Okay, our proposal is that we adopt this initiative and pay this one-time bonus to retirees of the RSA. It's two dollars per month, per year, for a number of years of service. So it could be anywhere from a couple hundred, I mean, from a couple hundred dollars to several hundred dollars, depending upon how long they work. Uh, it will be in our budget because we'll have to pay it, I mean, we'll have to, a lot for it, but it's only a one-time payment. And then, uh, in the ca, it will be paid back from the RSA by, uh, an additional payment to RSA, uh, in the amount of one point oh six percent of what we normally pay them to cover that four hundred and sixty thousand dollars for RSA retirees. And now, for the police and fire department, they're independent, we have to get the approval of the police and fire board to do the same thing, which we have done. And then we have to then set up a plan that will enable us to pay the same thing that, uh, that we're going to do. We will fund that differently for the police and fire department, we'll have to pay that, the plan is to maybe pay that out of surplus. And that will be paid at the same time in October. Both of these will go in the budget, both of these will be built into the next year's budget, and, uh, and we're paying. But we recommend it, because most cities are paying them, uh, for their retirees, but it's a one-time payment.
These, these payments will be paid in the next fiscal year?
They'll be paid, first pay in October.
I think, so RSA is going to go ahead and let the money out, all right? And what that does is it creates an unfunded liability, and then that is funded by the city, amortized over thirty years. So it's really not an outlay on the RSA side. Now, on the police and fire side, which is a city-controlled pension plan, um, there, there has to be a lump sum payment paid out. Uh, because they are not liquidating assets to do this, um, it's actually the city, it just doesn't, and there will be no unfunded liability to the local plan. It will just be paid.
In, in both instances? When, when, when will the payment to the police and firefighter retirees be paid?
Same time, same time.
In, in both instances, the money is going to come from the surplus in the general fund?
In the case of the RSA, we will pay them, actually, it's been re-clarified for us, we're going to make a one-time payment. Every year we make a payment to the pension fund, we're going to make a one-time payment of one point.
To RSA?
To RSA, yeah. We're going to make a one point oh six percent payment instead of the normal one, one-time payment. We're increasing it by point oh six percent, that will cover the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we'll pay for the RSA participants. In the case of the RSA, we don't have that opportunity, we'll just take the money from the surplus, and then we will, uh, and then we will pay it to the police and fire pension fund.
I'm so confused about where the payment to the RSA is coming from.
It'll be coming out of our normal cash, our, our cash payment to the RSA.
Does that come from the general funds?
That will come from the general fund, yeah.
So it's amortized, so there really isn't a let from our surplus of four hundred and seventy thousand. It'll, RSA or the state will actually issue those payments, and then we will have an amortized schedule that will be built into our normal contributions to the state.
So we're not going to, we're not going to write a check for four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the RSA?
That's correct.
We are not going to do that.
No.
That's correct. And over what period of time is that payment amortized?
I think the, every unfunded liability, the way I understood it, the police do a little bit different, but it's a thirty-year amortization. So that's why I think you're hearing this point six, additional, point oh six, additional contribution over the next thirty years.
And I read the paper that this is the first time in, I think, I read the paper, that this is the first time in fifteen years that RSA has authorized this?
I asked for that information, did you get it, by the way?
Yeah, I, that's not correct, we did pay a bonus back in two thousand seventeen, similar to this one, yeah.
Mr. President?
I have another question.
You know, this is really just, I think, an initiative to try and, you know, help pensioners who are on fixed income over time, get a little bit of an advantage or bonus to what they normally get. Uh, nobody is really arguing that we ought to make a cost of living increase at this time for pensioners. Because those are things that have really a material impact on the, uh, on the overall liability of a pension over the long run. Uh, this is something, though, that, um, we wanted, not we, but RSA wanted to initiate those to show some recognition for the pensioners without having to make a long-term obligation, uh, for the next thirty years.
Is it our, is it our future intention always to do this when the RSA authorizes it?
We don't have to do it, we don't have to, we're recommending that we do it, in this case.
I understand that, but is it our intention to continue to do this whenever the RSA authorizes it?
I don't think we can say whether it's our intention to do this five years from now. But I think as of today, as long as we have the financial wherewithal, I think we would go along with RSA.
Okay. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, so, one question on the police and fire, you said that RSA, that we did do this back in two thousand seventeen, did that also go to the police and fire? As well? And just so, I'm, I'm, I think I'm clear on this, but neither one of these entities, city and mobile employees nor police and fire, get any cost of living whatsoever over the course and tenure of the retirement pay, is that correct?
Unless the RSA or unless the police and fire pension board and the council agree to do something like that.
I think that's where that fifteen-year number came in, I think there was a cost of living adjustment done, but I think it was about fifteen years ago. But we have the bonus payment since.
Uh, I think it's safe to say we've seen everything increase in, in our economy except for, for pay. I know there's other initiatives out there to do this, I, I think it's in line with what I'm seeing in other places, definitely needed for folks on fixed incomes. Thanks.
I like this, Secretary of Administration, I appreciate you all putting this on the agenda, and many, uh, retirees also, I even got a phone call this morning, um, saying, you know, pass the pass. And I just told them, you know, this is the first read, you know, uh, many people are on fixed income, and, um, and, you know, it's just like, you know, how finance, I work to save just a couple of hundred dollars, you know, this going in their pocket, but a couple of hundred dollars go a long ways for, for many people, especially with keep that on fixed income. But again, I just appreciate you bringing this to the council.
Actually, it could be anywhere from a couple hundred dollars up to maybe seven hundred dollars, it depends on their longevity of the city, um, so.
With the cost of everything going up, I mean, that's, it's a pension, it's a best cost of notes. Anything else? I'm first.
Twenty two six fifty two, authorized contract in Southern Beach Hall for reach track and stations, maintenance and pumping at various city facilities, twelve thousand two hundred and dollars per year for reuse. Twenty one six fifty three, authorized contract for safety tracking signal, prevention services, fifty one thousand per year for reuse.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Ronald.
Is this the, um, the system where, say there's an emergency, the lights are then signaled, the?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Twenty one six fifty four, authorized contract with Davenport Street, Davenport Street for consultant services for office renovation, that's two hundred Government Street, forty eight thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars and seventeen cents. Thirty one six fifty five, authorized grant application to the running historical permission for this certified local government grant program supporting digitalization. At first five, eight hundred development office, fourteen thousand one hundred and forty four dollars, eight hundred and fifty, the local grant, nine thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars, eight and a half cents. Thirty seven six fifty two, uh, is a student, they're calling for the city to assist city, city, Monty Bryant. Six eight, six two seven, back panel, six, uh, state full park center, various department.
Got a little bit more information on that, six fifty seven.
Six fifty seven?
But, I can't, I can't understand, uh, the, uh, wave transit system operates with F T A grants, one of the grant requirements is that, thank you. One of the grant requirements is that the wave update periodically is title search of rights program. It, uh, the wave maintains the program so that, uh, people can come and play, so they, you know, if they have any question about whether their, uh, tr, rights have been violated in connection with the transit system. So this, uh, the council approved the same plan in two thousand nineteen, this is just an update, which is part of the, which, uh, wave is completing as part of their grant review. And the only difference between the current plan and the two thousand nineteen plan is that the exhibits have been updated. Other than that, it's all the same.
Dude, is there a copy of the updates that we have? I haven't seen the specific.
So that the entire package with all of the exhibits was very long, a couple hundred pages, and I'm not sure exactly how much of it gone into the agenda, but we can certainly.
I'm just curious about the specific updates, that'd be great, thank you.
And David, from the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Ronald.
I've received several calls over the weekend, and I've noticed it myself, that we've fallen behind once again on cutting grass. Hate to continue to bring it up in these sort of meetings, but it's just simply not being cut. Paul's Mill Road is, there, there's, I can stand up next to some of these areas right away, and the grass is almost to my head. Thick huge weeds and stuff overflowing into the street, Paul's Mill Road. At the intersection down in Theodore, as you just go over the railroad tracks on Bellingrat Road, there are, it's a safety hazard. These people that are walking from the neighborhood over to the convenience store or whatever, they're going out in the road because the grass is so high, they can't wave through it. Cypress Shores, I got a call this weekend or text message this weekend that says, um, uh, over the past several years, their ditches have been cut approximately four times a year. You know, city staff or whoever, they say it's contractors, but I don't know, that come out. Uh, they said, um, hey Ben, we hope you and your family are doing well, we have a question, the ditch is in our neighborhood. In the past, we've cut at least four times a year, but this year it has not been done at all, is there something wrong? I kind of have the same question, is, is there something wrong?
So, uh, if you can get me the locations that you have specific areas, like you've mentioned them, but, uh, send me a note and I'll check into it, get you an answer.
And then another, and on, I, I guess there's separate crews, so they're, you know, around the guardrails at bridges, you'll have a crew that goes out and does the weed eating and that sort of stuff, that fine work. And then mowers with tractors that come behind it, and they, they appear to be out of sync. As you drive down the road, you'll see right around a guardrail, it's nice and trimmed very well, and then the, the grass leading up to it and beyond it remain high for, you know, some time. And then that finally gets cut, and then, you know, they're just out of sync, so we never see the pristine nature that we should see. I, I just hate to ever, you know, we got to come in these meetings to say we need to cut the grass, you know, it's, we're behind, again.
I'm glad, is that's the untrue statement that the city is going to cut, uh, ditch four times a year?
I, I, I need to find out the specific area he's referring to and see what was been done in the past.
Is that being done anywhere that a ditch is being cut four times a year?
It, it, it depends on, you know, first of all, we got to make sure it's city versus county or state and, and figure out which one's which. The one you've mentioned, Cypress Shores, probably is city, but I need to verify specifically where, um, and then we can look and see what was done in the past and what currently contracted.
My question is again, is anywhere in the city where a ditch is being cut four times a year?
I, you know, I, I would need to see specifically, it, ditch, the ditches, a lot of ditch maintenance is removal of weeds and just reducing weeds for ditches. So, I, I think you're talking ditches kind of in front of their house, basically, the shallow drainage areas in front of their homes, is that correct, between their home and the?
It appears so.
Yeah, so I need to look and see that, see what that is. It doesn't sound right, but I need to check and see.
Well, ditch to me means ditch, not, uh, right away drainage well. So we're talking right away drainage wells, or we talking ditches?
I, I don't know, that's why I need to look and see.
Because y'all are cutting ditches four times a year somewhere, I mean, y'all about to get a mouthful from me. Yeah, but that's why I'm trying to, is that's true, that's a true statement, yes or no?
Doesn't sound like it, I just need to, I need to find out exactly where he's talking.
Yeah, I, I don't know either, this was just reported to me this weekend, that these ditches are done four times a year. But this all leads me to believe.